Sorry, guys. We were all having a nice conversation. But I just noticed that it is after six o'clock. So we will bring this Hermosa Town Board regular board meeting on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 to order at 6:02. Thank you all for coming. First, I'll call for a roll call. Kramer's here. Ferguson?
Here.
Kunt?
Here.
Harris is absent and service?
Here.
Is here. Also, our, of course, Terry, our finance officer is here. Our public works man Chuck is here. Anthony is here for our, all of our wonderful engineering work that we're having done. And the five citizens. Thank you all for coming. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call for changes, a review of the current agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like to add?
Uh, I'll probably get mentioned anyway, but just the update on the snow machine situation.
Okay. Anthony, will you have that in your updates?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Uh, three, the consent calendar approval of the February 19th and February 4th.
Do you want to make a motion for it approved?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as present.
He had a, he had an addition. Aaron made a motion with addition.
Amended.
He made the motion, do you want to second it?
So you'll second it? Okay. Aaron and Donna making a second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, sorry about that. Consent calendar, approval of the February 19th and 4th meetings.
I did, I have a correction on the February 4th one.
Mm-hmm.
As I was going through, um, on Baroque, I totally missed the motion to approve the quote from DSG and the amount of fourteen thousand, three twenty-one, forty-three. And that's, the town's gonna purchase those items and deduct it from the bid amount. So I need to have that in.
You need to add that.
In that, yes.
Okay. We have one addition to the February 4th minutes. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
With the addition.
For both minutes then?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Guys?
Second.
Thank you, Kel. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, please note that the conflict of interest, if you have some, please declare it in front of the item. Town updates. We have a few. Um, one thing I would like to bring up is that, um, uh, we are getting into the nicer weather. Winter's over. We don't have to worry about that anymore. And I believe it's time that we kind of set a schedule for work sessions. And then my own thought was that we have one, um, on the Tuesday nights opposite of our meeting nights. So that would be on a, on a month where there's four Tuesdays. Every one of them would have a meeting of one sort or the other. Uh, how does everybody feel about that?
So you're talking about starting this month?
This month, correct.
Well, you're lucky I don't have nothing on Tuesday night.
Yep. You're okay with that, Kel? Does that work for you?
Yes, ma'am.
We've kind of been doing that anyway, but now let's formally do it. So, okay? You all right, Donna?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And we will do that, I'm sure, through April. And we'll see where we stand at the end of April with what we have left to do.
So you're done with basketball?
Yeah. What, what time do you want to?
Regular.
Six?
I was gonna say six, but I will let there be some discussion on that. What works?
Five o'clock.
Yeah, that's always, Donna always wants early.
I'm always five o'clock, girl.
I'm fine with five or six, I mean.
Either works for you.
As long as it's after four.
Okay. Kel?
Yeah, I think five would work though.
You can do five?
Season's almost over, yeah.
Yeah, they just wrapped it up today.
Nice.
Did they win?
No, they had a, a team dinner.
Oh, nice.
So I guess they did.
So five work for you then?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's make it at five then.
Thank you, Kel.
Okay, very good. Next on the agenda is, um, Laura. Especially for you, in the paper on, um, February 26th, in the second paragraph, it says, uh, "The town currently has two wells, one of which is by Battle Creek and is offline due to radium." That is the incorrect information.
Oh, okay, because it was in the recording as well.
Uh, well, one is the one by Battle Creek, and that is the one that we use. It has in the past had radium and not right now. And it hasn't had for quite some time. Well, number two, which is offline, which is on the top of the hill, um, does have the radium and, and it is offline. We're not using it until we get our, um, WRT systems put together.
Okay, so the, just the, so one of them is offline?
Yes.
I just had the numbers incorrect.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Um, third on the list is, um, FEMA update. Uh, we did have a meeting this morning, and I'll tell you a little bit about it. Um, first off, I'd like to tell you that it's, it's on pause in a way. And that is because on February 14th, President Trump paused the FEMA IT support grant. Um, it, it was clo- the closing date for our grant requesting generators. But we are happy to say that our grant was submitted on time to FEMA and that, uh, they suggested, uh, that we continue on with the brick people and kind of keep things going, get it more ready so that when it does open up, that we will be ready for it. So, uh, that's where we are with that one. Our next meeting is in a month. And there are things, um, our list of what has to be done is, one, a draft of preliminary request for proposal. Two, setting dates for advertisements. Three, setting dates for opening bids. And four, to set the date for announcement of contract. So we're working on that. We hope to be through with those items by the end of May. All right. Any other board members have any other updates? All right, we'll move forward then. That brings us to six, the Trails West Saloon. Um, A, to approve Chase the Ace Games for the Trails West Saloon.
There's nothing in your packet with that. I did, did compose a letter kind of like I did for Breezy with, uh, bingo games that she was doing.
Okay.
Um, just as per South Dakota Codified Law 222525, where it says, um, the local government should approve that.
Okay. And he is going to the commissioners' meeting tomorrow? And then it's, what is it, what did I write on there? It's like Friends of something of Fairburn.
Friends of Fairburn Volunteer Fire Department or something?
So that's like where I'm guessing, so that it's through the fire department, but it'll be at my bar, so the money will get donated.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Okay. That will require a motion, um, to approve them to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Aaron makes the motion. Do I have a second?
So how long does this, uh, how long does this go on, Chase the Ace game? Is it a one-time, one-night thing or what?
No, it's, it's something that brings business to our community, but it's also donating the money. So like Hot Springs does it, Custer does it at the VFW. It's all, it goes one day a week, every week.
And the letter I have that it would encompass the year 2025. So that's kind of what we did with Breezy, so she didn't have to come back and get it.
So like you buy the tickets. So say you came in, you bought the tickets, you pay your money for the tickets. They split that pot, so the pot like right now in Custer, in Hot Springs is twenty thousand tonight. Half of it goes to you and half of it goes to, I think they're donating to the Humane Society right now down there. And then it's like the food bank and they pick different places to donate the money to. But a person, so the way that they raise the money is by having us come in and buy the tickets. And then one person, once they draw the card, will win half of that pot and the other half will go to a donation.
So how do you win the money? I'm, I'm, I'm.
So what they do, no, that's okay. So what they do is they put up like a big, um, clothes type thing where you put the cards on there. So like ours might be Chase the Ace. So you're gonna try and find the ace, see if it's the ace of hearts, okay? So you flip all the cards over and you keep, everybody comes once a week. You buy your tickets and then whoever's ticket is called, they can pick one of those cards that are flipped. And you're trying to get the card to win the pot. Which builds the pot, which builds for donation.
So about how long usually do, does it take to win it? There's fifty-two cards in a deck and you only do one a week?
The one in Custer that, or not, sorry, not Custer, Hot Springs, we've been going, um, I think they're on like ten weeks of rate now.
And they're?
But people have won it and so the pot has started over or whatnot, but yeah. So this one is at almost twenty grand, which means it's been going for a little bit.
Oh, wow. Okay. Kel?
So, um, then it must be after the card is drawn, it's put away and not put back on the board then?
Correct, yeah. Once that card is flipped over, it stays on the board flipped over. So the cards eventually feed out. So the more cards that are flipped, you have a better chance of getting the card that you need to flip.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And so each time the cost of buying the tickets will be the same?
Yes.
Each week?
Yeah.
Whatever it is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, gotcha. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kel. Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. And B, special event alcoholic beverage license for summer nights events. Yahoo.
So I was looking, we don't really have a, I can't find a permit that we could use. But I did get one from Somerset that we could, um, possibly use to make it ours. But, um, on the fee schedule, the only thing I could find, there is a special temporary special event. It says fifty dollars per day, not to exceed fifteen days. So typically you do this, you know, but they're gonna do it once a week. So I asked Kent about this and he thought maybe we could just issue a special event every fifteen days or every two weeks. And Andrea's okay with paying the fifty dollars. It'd be, you know, a hundred dollars each time. And I think in our ordinance it said that they can have up to twenty special event things in a year, so. If they started in, you started in May.
Yeah.
May, June, July, and you didn't know how much of August?
I think we're only gonna do like one in August just because everything else is.
We do all of May, June, July, and just a little bit of, that's gonna be fifteen.
And what nights is it gonna be?
Uh, we're gonna do Thursday since they canceled in Rapid this year. So I guess their loss is our win.
Oh, wow.
So.
So we'll be sitting up outside your building then?
Yeah, but my downstairs will be open too because it'll be hot, so there'll be AC inside as well.
So going by your dates that you've chosen, there's fifteen Thursday nights in that timeframe. Um, and when you read that.
But it's fifteen consecutive days is how you can do it, so. That's why Ken said we should probably just issue one every fifteen days or every two weeks or something. She's only doing it one day out of those.
Okay.
Well, actually, two days out of the.
Two days out of the fifteen.
So that means that it's gonna have to be on every agenda. And it will have to be addressed on every agenda.
Do I need to be here every time?
No.
Okay.
That's not necessary. If we decide you are needed, uh, Terry will call you and let you know.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
So we'll need to get that on probably by the end, end of April, because you're gonna start them in May, right?
Yes.
Yep. And we will go over the form and change it to our own form and go from there. Yes, Dan?
And just keep in mind, it's not just going to be in the bar. We're allowing them to use our frontage, so it won't be just all contained in a tight little area.
And so will that be fenced off?
I'm sure we'll have to.
We'll have to use snow fence or the orange, yeah.
Okay, very good. Awesome. Thank you. Dan?
And to me now, when you read this, it just says, "Any license issued pursuant to the section may be issued for a period of time established by the town board, not to exceed fifteen consecutive days." So we're not going to have fifteen consecutive days. So if the town board has to approve it for the whole period of the whole summer, they're able to do that right now and establish it and be set up. And then that way your fee schedule's set and everything's done.
Uh, we will do that when we go through the paperwork and get our own form filled out. And I, I'm with you. I can agree with that. I think that's how that is intended also, Dan. So, um, but we will make sure. We won't, we will not vote on that tonight. We will wait until the form is made out and then we will handle that. And we're happy about it, so. Yes, sir?
Um, just quick, uh, as far as age of consumption, all that, I assume you're probably gonna do some kind of wristbands?
Yeah, and I believe we're gonna have security too, actually.
That and then the fencing along that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be following all the regulations correctly on that.
Sounds good.
And we'll have that in your paperwork also, that you will be required to have that, I'm sure?
Yeah, I think I just found like a staff of five hundred wristbands too, so, in my bar.
All right.
So it works.
Who knows what you'll find in the bar?
Right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Yes.
That takes us to the engineer.
So like we kind of have, uh, some decisions we need to make on our well. Um, the, uh, the DWSRF, I had, uh, I had Suzanne here, uh, last Friday. And she came to inspect the progress on the lagoons. And we had enough time. She was happy with what she saw going on out there. And we had enough time to talk about the drinking water loan.
Nice.
And, um, so of course, there's always this, uh, you think you've solved it and answered all their questions and then they're still debating about, you know, what's Hermosa doing with that loan and, uh, you know, are we still, are they still interested in it? And so I took her to the, I gave her a little tour. So I took her to the top of the, the hill. I talked about what we need to do there to create the two pressure zones. I showed her the booster station, you know, showed her the pit where we're gonna put new pumps. Showed her the new panel that was built in Michigan and sitting in the, in the building there where the WRT will go in. And then, um, I took her to the north end of town and showed her the new hill, the hill where the new tank will go from Custer County money. And then, um, that, those potential well sites I showed her. So she's like, she was happy with that. She definitely thought, I mean, this was from her. Uh, she seems to be just reporting back to Andy Rules because she kept mentioning, well, Andy and, and she said, oh, Andy would be happy to hear about a Madison well. So, and I would know that. I mean, obviously, there's a debate internally there as well. Uh, warm water can have some chlorine residual challenges, but it's still a little radium, so, you know. Um, but I think, you know, they'd like, they, I said, well, what do you need for me to, to keep that all going, knowing that we gotta get this water tank out first, keep Custer happy? And then obviously right behind it, because the well driller, if we do a well up to the top of the hill, um, obviously he would like to get in there first, if you can. Um, just because that, having that tank in the way is a little bit cumbersome. We can make it work. I, we picked out a location on the property we own that would be ideal. We had to do some grading there and flatten it out, but it's only like a five percent grade right there where we need to flatten that out to make the platform for his whole setup.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I, I just think we need to keep, we need to update uh, DNR right now with what our plans are, right? We kind of, there's some decisions to make. And once we've made those decisions, then I, I can give them that update and I think that will satisfy them until we get this water tank out to bid and then I can dive in on, um, and I can also update a cost estimate too, to give them. So they can see how everything fits under their, their law. But we gotta, we gotta kind of keep some momentum going on that drinking water loan. Or they'll start vacillating and thinking how they can claw that back, so.
Okay.
So with that being said, the first thing is to approve the town engineer to apply for a water rights permit for the well. Just to give me an idea of the timeframe, um, I applied in January for a new water rights permit for Apple Springs, where we got our treatment plant.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, he moved the location where he wanted it down near the, to down near the highway because he wants to do like bottled alkaline water and just made sense to be in a commercial spot instead of like in the middle of the subdivision. And, uh, so I had to rewrite that. We rewrote it. We've got approval now. It's already gone to the engineer of the state. And, um, she actually has like one question left. Um, she wants to know if I want more water. So I guess there's a ton of water because I asked for a hundred and seventy-five GPMs and she said, you want that to be your diversion rate, which means multiply that by one point five. So there's plenty of water. They're not worried about that. So.
Good.
I gotta just update that. And then they said April, they would have the, it would go out to public notice for comment. And then after that comment period's closed, they issue the permit. So then, they'll probably get their permit end of April. So January, February, March, April, so three, four months. So they're doing pretty good at the water rates. They're about a monthly, but they're, they're pretty much what they said, ninety days, you know, give or take. So whatever we do, we start in March. So April, May, June, July, right? For us to get a permit. Is what I would assume if we decide to, whichever route we go, in Yucara or Madison would be the same.
Okay. So you need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you need a motion to discuss.
Guys?
I'll make a motion. This is still item A, right?
Yep.
To approve the engineer to apply for the water rights permit.
I'll second that. Thank you.
All right, so.
Just, just remember, when we apply, let's say they give it to us in July, we have five years to drill the well and seven years to put it into beneficial use. Otherwise, we start the process over pretty much.
One question that just hit me is why is, the seem, the Madison well seems like the best option across the board. Like, why, why isn't it being tapped more than it is? Is there any reason? Is it the temperature really that's driving?
Deep.
That's been driven, uh, the depth?
Twenty-eight hundred feet here.
People just don't want to punch that deep?
Yeah.
How deep is the Indian Yucara?
Thousand.
Yeah, like less than half.
And so you're going to twenty-four hundred for the Madison?
Yeah.
Or more?
Twenty-eight for ours, we're thinking.
Okay.
So is that, people are just getting so much better at drilling that we're able to get down there without being so scared?
A lot of the backend guys are down here drilling wells.
Yeah.
Like the one that, that we got the quote from. He couldn't get off Bellfish and I helped him get out of there and I said, you owe me one now. So don't, don't push us off. You know, we gotta make decisions, so.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, B.
Now, which well am I applying for a permit? Am I applying for Madison well or an Indian Yucara well?
I think Madison is the way to go. From where I've been talking to different people, they say it's no brainer.
Feels that way. What do you think, Dan?
Seems like, uh, costs are a wash and the impact to users is about the same. So at the end of the day, we would say, do we want a well that likely has no radium? Or do we want a well that maybe will have some and will have to scale the water treatment plant to accommodate for that, thus eliminating any cost savings we might have between the two. That's why I say the costs are about a wash.
Yeah.
Plus with the extra infrastructure to run piping from down there up the hill. Who knows if we have to do easements and stuff now with all that because of the, uh.
Are you in discussion? So one thing I'll say is, given what I told you about Apple Springs, they're not worried about volume. So I could ask for more water. I could ask for three hundred gallons per minute, which is everything we need.
I also am for the Madison. Uh, I just think that in the long run, I think it's the best way to go. And I personally, um, would like to, uh, just attach another set of piping to it so that the water stays hot, hot to fill my pool. And someday the town's swimming pool. Anyway, yeah, I am for the Madison, so. I've heard three. What, Aaron?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's, it's a good deal. It sounds like we're a lot less likely to have just bad luck with the Madison, right? I mean, we could get, we could have bad luck at the end of the bar.
Oh, you can always have bad luck.
But it's a lot less likely with the Madison.
Yeah, Madison's doing it.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna hit it dry well.
As far as we know, the radium in the Madison, never been detected.
Yeah, yeah. Only, I think the remaining question is gonna be, everything now or everything, or now or later.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Everybody says, all four board members say that Madison. I'll entertain a motion in that effect.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, you're gonna make me make it? I would rather not make it. The board president.
Well, I can make it, Dan.
All right, Donna will make it. I'll second.
Okay.
Donna and Aaron. Yeah. Robert's Rules of Order say that technically the president should not make, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any questions?
Yeah, now you can have your question.
My only question wasn't, thank you for your, uh, indulgence. It's a matter where I love and always have had a passion for the Madison. The only question I had, and I know it's a little more infrastructure, if a guy can move it to the farther point of Preston's and set the well up on that portion. And then maybe eliminate a little bit of the situation on hot water. Because we all know the farther you go to the west, the less you're gonna get in the hot water. And so I didn't know if that was a possibility to think about on that aspect of it. You can gain a quarter mile. And if you got your geologist down here, I know when I talked a little bit with Cal that a geologist down here would be a really good aspect. I know with Kim Taylor and, and what he's done on his Madison wells, the lineup from Spearfish to Hart Ranch to Hermosa water users, every one of them have hit three hundred gallon a minute wells and the temperatures are phenomenal. And so I think everything you're doing in pursuit of infrastructure, well and everything else is dead on. And sooner is better, but the other side of it, if a guy can move back farther, you might actually surprise yourself and, and a geologist is gonna tell you that. Maybe it won't make any difference at all going a quarter of a mile more. Maybe it will.
So they're all up in Deadwood right now at a conference.
Sure.
And I said, they'll be here tonight and I can't join you guys, but they'll be here tomorrow. So maybe I can ask them if they can come down now that we're gonna do a Madison. And see if they can come. They're at a drillers convention at the lodge.
And that is something that we don't have to decide right now. We can do the research on that.
No, yeah, location, volume is open.
Thank you, Dan.
You guys have done a big decision and you've done the right decision. I think the board is a hundred percent and spot on on where you're headed, so.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we have to do the next step and that was something I discussed with, uh, Just so you know, we have to do the next step and that was something I discussed with Suzanne from D A N R. The next step is we have to advertise this. As much as we have people who like to drill it and we have, we have to do the proper steps through the Custer Chronicle, write an advertisement. And that, that's when we lay out, we wanna see this volume, we wanna see a Madison well, we wanna see it at this location and then we get our bids in.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Aaron, you had another question?
Yeah, just, um, the other component with, of this was the now or later. What sort of timeframe would you want us to? Work within to give you that answer?
So we have a budgetary price because we did get a quote. Um, I consider it budgetary because I've been looking at other. Just comparing prices and quotes and stuff like that. And, um. I think when we say budget, it means not to exceed and that's what we used in our model. So I think we're safe to say that the numbers we put in there, it's gonna be that or less. Because once we bid it, it becomes we're competitive and we already knew there were some highlighted items in the quote that were optional. And in fact, in, in Bellfish's, they, they hit a total depth yesterday. And, uh, twenty-five hundred feet. They have a thousand G P Ms. And it's free flowing naturally and, um, the acidation, they are gonna put on another well. So they, actually that part actually came out and they're gonna use that on another well. So I can expect those things, um, that there, there's kind of, you know, safety cushions, but not necessarily, uh, needed. And then the bids are gonna come and they're gonna be coming in tighter, right? So if you use the model that we, we generated to make a decision on when. It's really, I think it's a financial decision, the when. And obviously the well's not gonna get any cheaper the longer we wait.
Should we work session then?
Go ahead and finish that.
Should we work session then?
Uh, yes, we should, but it can be towards the end of the work sessions, yeah. Go ahead, Cal.
I mean, uh, the cost. They're not gonna wanna give us a, a bid for work that's gonna be done in a year or two, right?
Or five years. If it, you know, I mean, we have five years to use it. I agree, so.
So, um, I mean, timeframe is gonna be, you know, prob, what, within a year, a year?
Usually be that, that season, right?
It's max.
Yeah, if you, they hold it for that drilling season, I mean, they're taking the risk because the casing price could go up.
Yeah, right.
These, fuel price goes up and down, casing price does the same.
Yeah, but.
Chuck, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that they're not gonna wanna give us a solid bid for really far out in the future.
I mean. No, so like, but ideally you have your permit in hand, right? So once you, you do the bid. Because you, you wanna get through the state that you say to that driller, I've got a permit. Give me the best price. They know we're, we're, we mean business. We're ready to go. And they'll put us in their schedule and they'll tighten, they'll sharpen their pencil, you know? So it's kind of what we'd wanna do. So given what the timeframe I said, it would be a July.
Ninety-day view.
Bid.
Okay, Chuck?
I don't know if there was any confusion at start there, but there would not be any radium in Madison well. That, that's a given.
Right.
There's no danger that we have to try to treat that after the fact. And the other side of that is I think he was right on the fact that the tariffs and the things that are going on when we drilled this well up here. We were bound to use American-made steel for the casing and the drop pipe and that kind of stuff. We ran into all kinds of problems there. That they could not produce, uh, the drop pipe stainless steel, couldn't get it in the U S. So we had to go foreign and there was paperwork to lower after that trying to, you know, calm the water that we didn't use American-made. The way with the tariffs and everything that's going on now, I mean, the sooner the better because those prices could increase at any time.
Probably already.
And the casing.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Thank you. It's also a matter like Kim Taylor has always said, if you wanna weed out the chances of a bad driller. As you put in there, they have to have the experience of so many Madison wells before they can qualify to grow. And that way then you get the better qualified guys in here instead of the low ballers. And we experienced that with our well number two. So that's always a great qualification on that side too.
Good memory and point, Dan. Thank you. Okay.
So that's all I have. Um, that kind of lays out the timeframe. So pick location, volume. And that would be in the R F P. In July, if I put the permit in. I mean, I gotta put it in the permit, the location. I mean, the quarter, quarter quadrant, right? Needs to be in the location, so within forty acres. Um, volume, if we, I mean, we can ask for more volume, right? So we could ask for what we were gonna do, which was a hundred and fifty. Plus a hundred and sixty. So let's say three twenty-five. And I, I don't think it'll upsize the casing, but I'll verify that. So whatever we can get to without upcasing the casing and then causing it to be way more expensive. We just ask for that.
Okay.
Costs a little bit more for the permit. We were talking, yeah, in the hundreds of thousands, hundreds of bucks to a thousand bucks, something like that.
Which is nothing in the scope of things.
Yeah, I know.
So, yep, okay.
Okay. Um, TIF two update. So I have a document from Neil. Read out. Um, he's been on the phone with the Prestons, all of them individually and everything else. So. He's also been on the phone with the state, um, revenue office. So. He said the South Dakota law requires that various findings and issues be addressed in the project plan. Uh, that's what he's working on. The general framework and narrative are near complete. Um, he has the tax rates for both Custer and Pennington counties. Um, he's estimated, we've estimated the cost of infrastructure, um, and that's something I've done. Um, there is a discussion right now with D O T, so. So I compartmentalized that discussion, but I had it at the same time. So, um, talking about the access to the, to the tank. Before the meeting started, um, they won't, they've got restricted access due to some kind of federal grant. Federal acquisition that was done on that, on that property. So when they re, when they re, when they rearranged, it was, we looked at the, the deed. When they realigned the highway, there was money that exchanged hands to basically give up their rights to any other accesses. On the highway, except for the one they got right at the, uh. Right at the median break there, um, that goes into the Preston's property. So, um, we have to come down. Um, the, the right of way where the water and sewer is and come into Shore Road. That's for our wa, our north tank. They won't let me out on the highway even through the section line. Now, Preston's in the same boat when it comes to a second driveway. So after a certain number of homes, so let's say thirty, I think it's thirty, plus thirty in Michigan, it's a certain number of homes. Then you need a second driveway.
Yep.
So where's my second driveway gonna be so that they can get to the hundred plus homes, right? And there was fourteen acres that I had in the plat. I don't know if we, if the board has seen the plat, that where it stands now. But it's, it's the southwest corner of Preston's property. I mean, I don't know if you had beacon open, it's still open. And this affects the cost estimate, which is affecting the TIF. So this is what we were talking about, coming down this to Shore Road. And that's a question for Dan to help us with too. Um, but when it comes to the TIF and the Preston's, um, they also can't have any, they have restricted access along this. Basically the only one they have is this one. That's the top of our, that's the town limits. And D O T will, doesn't even have the, the rights or controls the access to this. Because this was given away when they realigned the highway. The highway used to go like that, I think down Gumbo Lully.
Yeah.
So it's in the warranty deed, so they, they want us to come out here. For the second. Because here, here is.
Oh, man.
So there's fourteen acres right here and then there's like a hill that goes up to get up to the top. So we're looking at that now to see how we can phase this. But more than likely that fourteen acres will get developed earlier, sooner than later. Um, different distant, the difference is because this is flat right here and our water and sewer is right here. I mean, we're fine to do the first. We're fine because it, it goes like this. So we're fine to, to start here and you'll get thirty homes. But then after that, we'll have to get the second driveway in, which is right here. And then there's fourteen acres here that would need to be developed and then you develop the middle and connect the two. So you have to build that road and connect it. Our tank is over here. So that's what we're doing now. And this was a meeting I had today at one with D O T. Where they told me that, uh, all this stuff is restricted. So we'll relay out the plat. And see how we can do driveways like that. Now, you'll, we'll have to look at the two options then of if we were to have this flat area. With houses, do we run sewer down here and avoid a pump station? So. And that's.
That's a whole lot of discussion.
Little bit of a distance there.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise it's pump it to the top and let it gravity down. I mean. We would get through phase one and we were always thinking that phase one was the, the lift, right? Where we get it rolling. Once you get it rolling and, and phase one will be like twenty-five, twenty-five homes a year. So if you can do the first blocks. Of twenty-five, then, then the development can sustain itself. But there's this little lift that's gonna be right here, you know? Now do we do a, do we do just a, a second ingress egress, uh, and just do the road and then keep building? Because you can do that too, you know? It's not really good to put in, I mean, we wouldn't have to pave that. We could leave that gravel. Until houses, houses are built on either side. And they said fifty-two step process to relinquish that control access control. And Bruce said he's, he's never seen anybody go through all those steps.
That's for the.
Successfully, yeah, to release it. There needs to be a appraisal and the value of the accesses are, is appraised. So the property's value for appraised with the, with no access. Extra access and with the extra one. And the difference needs to be paid. You're basically paying, you're buying that access back if you were to try to get on the highway. So, so that's where we're at in terms of the cost estimate for the TIF. So update on the access.
And does, uh, Preston's know about this yet? If you just had this meeting today?
Just had this meeting today. Um, no, I, I haven't talked to John or anybody yet. Um, but I, I would, I would wonder if they knew that they had controlled access on that.
Yeah, that's my question, so.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Discuss this more at the next meeting and.
Yep. So, um. So Neil on the other end has been talking extensively with them about the project, uh, project and, you know, going to each of the siblings to explain things. Items that are outside, outstanding include financing arrangements from the Preston family, especially the interest rate of the loan, bond or note. Interest must be included in the project costs. Um, also we need a final layout of the lots. That's gonna be affected by the access. And identification of parcel reserved for potential commercial property. So according to the Department of Revenue. Um, we need to have, this needs to be a classification of economic development, which means we have to have some commercial in this, in this development. That classification, classification is important as it holds the school district harmless in the state aid formula. Um, once we have the total project cost, we can calculate how much the district can raise per year in revenue. In short, how many houses need to be built per year to pay the anticipated costs over the life of the district? And that would then be seen in the amort, amortization schedule. So the project will be developed and constructed in phases and they too need to be identified. And so we're working with, uh. With the, the Preston's for notation in the project plan. Uh, we're also working with the D O T. That's the one I just talked about regarding the access from the highway. Um, plating the phases will be after the adoption of the project plan and the developer's agreement. Um, the property is currently zoned agriculture in Custer and Pennington County. The statute requires the zoning code and comprehensive plan follow local codes. Uh, we're exploring the possibility of rezoning the property to residential simultaneously with the adoption of the plan and the establishment of the TIF district. So that would all get zoned, rezoned potential at the same time. Neil will be consulting legal counsel on that, um, because it's rezoning could be changing their tax burden. Uh, there's a couple of other items that legal counsel need to advise on. Um, Preston family have indicated they'll be providing details of their intentions, they're contracting, contacting banks, local brokers and builders. Uh, they also must approve the final site plan and the phases. So obviously when we, so when my designer looks at that other access and not fighting D O T and just getting, going through with the access as we have it. In our hand, um, that, that plat will need to be brought to them, the Preston's. There's gonna be more lots. So the good news is, um, overall. Um, there'll be more lots than a hundred. Um, but we'll have to look at the best options for those lots that be based on their topography. And based on the fact that Shore Road is still in the county. That whole triangle there is still in Custer County, not in the town limits. So you run sewer down there, then we have to think, what does that do?
Okay.
So. That's the TIF update. Snow machine. Uh, so snow machine's out at the lagoons. Um, I know they tested it today. Um, Chuck too put a, a pony tank on it so it can run all night. Um, I don't know if they're gonna run it tonight, but I know they'll be running it tomorrow for sure. Um, we're a little worried, worried about the winds that we had today. So we're hoping, we don't want the winds to be twenty-five miles an hour from the northwest.
Yeah.
Because our wastewater treatment plant will be an ice cube. So we don't wanna impede that. But as soon as the winds die down, which is supposed to die down tonight, they'll be making snow. So we're hoping to get evaporation and get some allowances there. The other aspect is, is that as they are completing the treatment plant, that berm, um, can be brought up. We're getting tight on dirt for Baruch to use to make our detention basin. And I've got my Omaha office trying to figure out, is it under the lagoon B? You know, I know there's a topsoil. There's a lot of topsoil that's stockpiled there. But then on top of that, we can't take out the berms to lagoon B because it's full. So we're in this kind of quagmire, so all I can do is tell him to trim the berms. Keep trimming the berms on the outside and get the inside done. So that way he can line it, put the riprap in. And do that. I guess I didn't put an update of the lagoons, but I couldn't do that as, because the, the snow machine's only there because we're, we're trying to make it to April first. Um, Keystone's down still. I've talked, I, last I talked to Jerry up there, he sounded like he was toast for the rest of the season, so. Um, but if we can, and we got some decent evaporation just because of the warm weather the last week or so, so. Um, if he can get, if by mid next week. Everything's trimmed in that detention basin and everything's compacted, it's ready for the liner. The liner can be put in and I would assume by the end of next week, um, with the liner and the riprap. The liner can be put in, and I would assume by the end of next week, um, with the liner and the riprap in, um, we could, we could start filling that detention basin. So, that puts us, what's today, the fourth? So, by the twelfth, something like that. So, we still have to make it another.
Friday is the fourteenth, so.
Yeah, the fourteenth. So, we still have another, um, sixteen days in the month of March before we're allowed to land a plat. That's going to be close.
I know every time I turn the water on, I think about that. Turn it off, turn it off. That's crazy.
Consider water.
Yes, Dan.
So, how far behind are we on the springs and getting that up so a guy can use that? I thought, a guy thought they were going to be like November, December possibly operational with that now and then.
Yeah.
Or like three months behind, four months behind?
They're, they're actively building it and, um, they're making progress, but I had, I don't have a permit. So, it's still an administrative review. So, even if I had the permit or the treatment plant completely operational, there's nothing, I, I contact them every week or we have my permit, or we have my permit. They're supposed to send it to us, supposed to have administrative review, then it goes back and they issue it and they allow us to do it. Just the way that they're going, I mean, they said, they said they could have that in ninety days, and I submitted it in September.
And they as in?
D A and R.
Yeah.
So, I'm not saying the treatment plant shouldn't be, shouldn't be done already. It should be, it should have been done already. Um, but even if it were, we'd be just in recirculating.
And we're not at a, above or beyond cost then, are we, for me about? And one thing, if I may, on the TIP, um, you said they are going to zone that to residential. Are they going to go to residential ag with that? Because that's what we talked about before.
Yeah.
So, that they could have the usages of the horses or whatever else they want.
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what Neil's looking at is what's the best option for them, given the plat and how we're laying things out. Um, the plat probably, the sizing and kind of the arrangement of it isn't going to change. It's just going to be, well, there'll be a road change to access, and then there'll be some more lots. But sizes and stuff like that and open space, that'll probably still be what it is. So, he's looking with legal counsel on, can they do residential ag? Can they phase the zoning? You know, we're trying to keep it so that the tax burden, everything matches what we anticipate the tax, the tax revenue will be and the TIP revenue because, you know, everything, once you put something in of more value, then everything else around it goes up. And so, then you're not getting that increment.
Right.
So, that's what you got to be careful with in the project plan.
Seeing on the road access, they have discussed also coming in on Murphy Road for their second. And then DOT points that they had to off of seventy-nine and that they would have to develop a turning lane for that access in the beginning of it. And then the possibility of the Shore Road access too. So, now have they ruled out the Murphy Road one?
Well, we're not.
He's close to Murphy Road.
Yeah, point of order, point of order.
Dan, this is, the, the TIP discussion is, you can call Anthony. I know you talk to him from time to time.
I tried to raise my hand, but I'm not.
I, I know, but it, it's, this is all a lot of decisions that, uh, uh, are going to take time and discussion. And so, we'll hold this to another date. So, Cal, you had something?
I just wanted to ask, in your opinion, if we had the treatment plant done before they issued the permit, would we, I mean, would that make their decision easier to go ahead and, and work on the permit faster?
Not at all. Uh, that's not my feeling. They just take their time and that's it.
All right.
Okay.
They don't know the treatment plant's not ready to open the valve. They don't know that. For all they know, we were supposed to be, who are done with it already, and they're holding us up. Doesn't seem to matter.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Snow machine? We all need to go down there and just look, huh?
Don't be too close.
Yeah, right.
What time do I need to be up there with it?
Snow corns.
He's going to start it. He, he didn't really care about the temperatures, so.
Just the wind. All right. Thank you, Anthony. That brings us to planning and zoning, uh, community acknowledgement form.
Twenty-four, five forty-seven, South Dakota Highway seventy-nine to approve and sign.
This was sent to us by Claycomb Engineering. It's, uh, uh, Loma, Lomar dash F when it is approved.
Just, just need a motion to have the chair sign and then send it off.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to allow me to sign that.
I'll make the motion for the president to.
Okay.
Sign the form.
Aaron. Aaron and Donna, thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, board. That brings us to nine claims.
And I do. I do have an update on the claims. The amount for, um, Baroque should have been, and I corrected that, ninety-seven thousand, four seventy-two thirty-one. And then when I went to pay the Dakota Supply bill, we had a, uh, credit of like a thousand thirty-eight dollars. So, that reduced that. So, I have the new amounts in there. So, the total for accounts payable is one eighty-nine, nine forty-nine ninety-eight, and the total claims is one ninety-nine oh eighty-four eighty. So, that's what I would need approved.
Okay. I would entertain a motion, um, to accept the amended claims. I make a motion to accept the amended claims as Terry has them stated. Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? For discussion purposes at least?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. I like the name of that business, Wyoming Sun Maid. Any questions or comments? None from the board. Dan?
On the lone coyote water and sewer extension, what's that entail?
That's Benish. While you're looking, yes?
It's not in this claims. Well, did we get the check to, uh, for the truck?
Yep, that was in last.
They're happy? We're happy?
Yeah, we got the, we got the bill of sale on that side. So, that was, um, part of the contract we have with them. Um, this is, maybe Anthony could probably.
So, this, we, we have an amendment within this lone coyote, uh, project for the plats that we're doing for the TIP, the Preston stuff. So, um, we're at one hundred percent on the, on the new plats. So, that's in here. That's the majority of it. Anything related to the water sewer, we've completed the design for the, the siphon. That's all done. So, the only thing that's really left is, um, construction administration, and then, um, we have some budget left for topo. But other than that, um, that project is basically just, um, right, waiting to, waiting to pull the trigger for D A and R to approve our siphon, which I know that'll go smoothly because we're not asking them for any money else. But it, that cost of that is in the, the project costs for the TIP too, so.
Dan, are you?
Well, and that was my question on the reimbursement. Then will that come out of the owners? Unfortunately, in their financing, and it will be reimbursed to us then?
Yeah. So, the cost for that amendment, which is the new plats, that dollar figure is actually the interest we're collecting. Um, money we took from, we collected from the Preston's, we put it into an interest-bearing account.
Right.
So, it actually doesn't cost them anything or us. I was able to do those new plats just with the interest we were on the tax.
But it'll, and administrative portion of it, though, that all still come back and reimburse that even though that is in that investment fund?
Yeah, it's like, so, so the new, new plats is, is interest. So, that's just completely interest, uh, money sitting in the CB. Then the other part, which was the original project, lone coyote extension, the engineering for that was approved, but that can get reimbursed to the town through the TIP. It's engineering costly, yeah.
That's what I thought, so.
So, my question would be, is this, uh, road access, driveways, whatever, is that going to change any of this? The plating, uh, no, nothing? Okay.
No, that's for the tank exclusively. Like, we're not, it doesn't allow, we won't allow the Preston's really to access. It's really to drill the well and to, to build the tank up there. So, yeah.
And then for our further access?
No, that would be.
So, that is just during the building time?
Now, we'll keep that, I would assume we would keep that road access to the tank. But we put a gate on it. Nobody could go in there. It's just in case we need to go up there a couple, you know, every week or whatever to check, check our pump house and stuff like that.
Okay. Right, Dan?
And then also please on, uh, on Chuck's eight hours of pumping the lagoons, what were we pumping down there?
Do you have a bill for that?
We're surcharging B. Okay. And did we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did we then update our C-MON report to let that all be known that we were doing that with D A and R? So, they're aware of what's transpiring in that portion of it? As they want to know pretty much everything as we're going through, they were pretty strict on that part of it. Every time we made a move, they wanted to know.
Anthony, you got?
Well, so, well, D A and R knows because she was here and she did a tour of the lagoons last Friday. And I, I pointed out to her for a very good reason because I know she'll go back and tell the guy working on the permit to move, move on it because we're surcharging B because we have no choice. We can't land apply. And, uh, but as, you know, as it pertains to C-MON, where it was, where the C-MON was at was I was letting our administrative staff work on updates. I gave them my guidance from the EPA on how to do it, and it's like a step-by-step process. I wanted them to get through that internally here. Then I could do a review, and then that's updated and we can send it to D A and R. I think Terry and I will have to pick that up and keep it moving. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, any other questions or comments on the claims?
We made the motions already.
Yeah, just tell them all that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Ten, law enforcement. We did get logs this time, um, starting from February first through February twenty-eighth. A total of forty-three calls. Ten of them were school patrol. Five of them were paper service. Nine of them were extra patrol. One transferred call on nine-one-one. And so, that, those numbers come to twenty-five. So, that means there's eighteen other calls. Um, I have a miscellaneous. I have, um, traffic hazard. We have one animal, something about something stolen, uh, concerned citizen, juvenile miscellaneous, theft from a trailer van call, another trailer van call, signal, a wild signal. I don't know what that is. But, uh, a tow, uh, another assist, another officer, a what?
Wildlife.
Wildlife, uh-huh. So, that's for one month, forty-three calls. That's not too bad, especially when you take off, in my opinion, uh, the school and the paper assist and the extra patrol is, is not anything other than natural things that have to be done. So, not too bad. Eighteen calls on other items, so. Any comments?
I make a public service thing today. If you ever see the lights going off, but nothing else on the railroad, call, you can message me.
Okay.
And I can have the railroad send somebody out. You can get out in like three minutes.
Ah, okay.
Bad rail brakes. So, like, like this.
Wow.
Because of this change in temperature from hot to cold on welded rail.
Okay.
We had one in Whitewood and one in C-MON just today.
Really?
One day. So, you ever see that? I'll call the roadmaster and they'll have somebody out in a couple of minutes.
Thank you for that. That's good to know. So, that brings us next to legal, which we have nothing. Kent is not here today. Nothing from anybody else. That brings us down to public works. What you got, Chuck?
Did you see that eagle?
No, uh, there's nothing on the streets other than there's quite a few rough spots showing up after a moment of excitement. Three lights. We had one out down at the pump house, at the lower pump house. The light was out down there. And I did not check this morning to see if they had fixed it or not. And, um, I think that most everything that covers the lights on the water side, just a routine sample for them taken. We took back tea to town yesterday, I believe it was. And, um, we were unable to mail them anymore, as you already know. So, um, sewer, uh, actually back on the water, the repair over on Fifth and Manning's went well. Actually turned out to be an RJ, which is a mechanical joint, that, uh, companion plans that devoted to the valve, the gasket, whether it's improperly installed or whatever twenty years ago, like, you know, leaking out of their gasket. So, they would not guarantee the repair without replacing the valve also. So, that was a fairly high expense. We have not seen a bill from them yet. What happened is the, when the water pressure goes between the gasket and the seat in the valve, that it created a rough spot. So, they would not guarantee the repair unless we replaced it. So, um, I actually, uh, they hold off the slop and I ended up, uh, loading the truck with clean, uh, dry dirt. So I actually, they hold off the slop and I ended up loading their truck with clean, dry dirt and hauling it up there. And I also took, I think, three bucket loads out of the city's gravel to repair the street. And we've got some, beat some parts laying in the ditch up there yet that I need to pick up. Other than that, it's cleaned up and done and, so.
I noticed the parts sitting there and yes, they do need to be cleaned up. I have pictures of the stages of work, many of them, I was over there several times. And it was a very sloppy, muddy mess in there. And so I was very happy that they actually left it open for a couple of days to dry and help, help that out a little bit. And it didn't take them very long on Monday to then get it closed up, so, very good.
They needed some clean rock and they're, I pulled that out of my pile at the shop there, so. Charged for that and the transportation of the gravel and stuff back and forth and they're not, doesn't amount to much, but, you know, still there.
Excuse me, just a minute Chuck, Dan had his hand up for a minute.
Thank you, um, just wondering then, with that being in Chuck's contract that he's to do the repairs and stuff, is it the ability then that he's gonna be the one that contacts contractors for that? Or is that something that'll be coming through the town to have that bid out for contractors on situations like that? Or is that something contractually that's gonna be taken out of his contract or?
In this particular case, we decided that it needed to be done. And when I talked to Chuck, he said he was, at that time, he hadn't thought of anybody that could do the work, but that he would think about it in his normal nighttime manner. And, and then he called them and they were available and so the job got done. And we had other people to call if that hadn't happened. We're, we feel very lucky that they came, that somebody came and got that done. And I think they did a real good job on it and we'll see what their bill is and, and. But as far as the, I don't have a problem with the fact that Chuck called somebody. Like I said, when we talked, he was trying to figure that out and we'll, hopefully, the bill will be under the $50,000 mark where we had to, um, put it out to bid, so. Go ahead.
So then, contractually, then whoever's in charge on the board doesn't have the responsibility to know whom the contractor is or what's?
In this particular case, it was done. The work was done, we're glad to have it done. And when we go over Chuck's contract again and each of the board's responsibilities, we'll, we'll have that, get that figured out too. Chuck?
It states pretty clearly in there that I have first dibs on making the repairs. And if I cannot do that, then it's up to me to find somebody else to do that. I contacted a couple of different contractors that were licensed to do work in town here and nobody was available. Larson worked at the school, so he was familiar with plumbing and stuff in town here. And so that's basically how it went. They was going to contact me when they were coming and it ended up they came down the night before and as you well know, what went on there, so. Anyway, then they came the next morning and didn't get started very early. They didn't break ground till about 9:30.
Right.
And so it went pretty smooth. I mean, and it was quite expensive what went on down in the hole.
It was, I, I was amazed that the, the big equipment that they had, I thought, well, it's bigger than I think they need. But once they got into it and it show, and it was all opened up, it, it was obvious that it was, it was well done, work well done.
It, it took a little more than like many or something like that because it was seven foot deep. And then the separation between the force main from the sewer and the fiber optic and the telephone and everything that was in there, it had to be done with about an 18-inch bucket to be able to get in between each of those utilities and still have the volume of dirt coming out, that they did. And they definitely knew what they were doing, you know, I mean, it wasn't any funny business at all.
I watched them for a while. They did good.
Had a very good ditch man and, yep, so it went pretty smooth.
All right. Next?
Uh, sewer, I think Cal, Anthony hit on things pretty well over there. We are surcharging B. And so that's bringing the water level down in A, so we're a lot more comfortable with some capacity there. And I'm thinking probably they're gonna try to set raptors in the next two or three days, but the wind today, that would not happen. Holds are in the ground and the plumbing part of it is the return lines and stuff. The one from the treatment plant over to the other new holding pond is, is not in yet, but that's coming down the pipe. So it's, it's coming along, but, you know, it's, they are the ones that are building the building, not I. So consequently, they're knowing their own schedule when they come and don't. And a few times I thought they shouldn't have been there when they were, so I said, I'm not building buildings, so.
Yep.
I've been assisting from day one, so, and that comes out as part of the contract, so, end of story.
Yep, thank you.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Open work orders, we nailed out four or five again this week. And if that's the name of that. And we have one over at the Parsonage over there on Manning Street that had the same reading for a couple, three months. But the reason why it is is because nobody lives there. But it is the old style meter, so we made arrangements to get into the basement and change that out, which I'm allowed to do, is repair and replace. So we've got an appointment to get in there and get that changed out on the second of August.
Are they planning on running it or they have any plans?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I mean, after they've lived there forever, but when she left town, I went back and as far as I know, nobody else has been in there since.
Okay.
So there were several other meters around that we worked on also. And we have a, a meter go bad on Fifth Street. And it was, had some leaks, you know, rivers and, so that got replaced and cleaned up. And then there was a waterfall on Passport, didn't have any water. Of course, my mind was racing a hundred miles an hour of what got cut or what turned on or something.
Right.
As we followed up on it, the problem was in the house. Pointed out what had to be done and furnished him a new meter and walked away.
Okay, very good.
So I think that kind of rounded out the weeds, this week in a way. So like I said, on the, across the pond over there, I think we're gonna try to get around to set the stuff. Get moving back on that, that, they were working on the snow machine today over there, it blew too windy because they were suffering on the air.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
If somebody has some questions?
Any questions for Chuck? Okay, Dan, anything on streets?
No.
Okay, thank you. Finance officer?
No monthly financials for this meeting, they'll be at the next meeting. Couple department updates. I did order the digital speed sign that we need to replace that the insurance is gonna cover. So when that comes in, I'll work with the LT to get it installed. The other thing, so the eight-month CD that we had, which is the other part of that $500,000 that we got from Custer County, that will mature March 26th and I understand we'll need to put that in our account then, Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna get out to bid, so.
Okay. So I'll probably put that on the next agenda just to have you give me a motion to do that.
Okay.
And then the other thing, South Dakota Municipal League did send something out just today. There's a House Bill 1130 that has to do with changing the dates for municipal school elections, so I will follow that. Be part of it, hopefully they don't mess it up.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Brings us to old business. A is volunteer of the year. We have several, received several nominations. The board was given the last two weeks to get it read and give them some thought. And I will give my thought first. I guess I can read who, who they are. There is, for Ryan and Breezy Simpson, Linda Hazelstrom. For Jerry and Kathy Stiles. And for Leo and Deb Van Sandbeek. Uh, I can, my opinion on this is that sometimes we give one a year, sometimes we give two a year. I would like to see my own opinion, two this year. One to Leo and Deb Van Sandbeek and one to Linda Hazelstrom. And my reasoning is only because I don't believe that we should give four out in a year. And that both of the people that I believe should have it have been doing this for years and years and years. I also believe that Ryan and Breezy did a phenomenal job and are still doing a phenomenal job. And I'll be anxious to see or help them be on the volunteer of the year next year. And Jerry and Kathy Stiles have done a lot for the community also. But like I said, I would like to, my own recommendation is for the other ones and that is because of the years of service that they have given. I will ask each board member for, for their feelings on the matter or you can make a motion into the effect that what you think you want. Cal?
Um, can I go last?
All right. Aaron?
Uh, it's tough. Ryan and Breezy sure did quite a bit this year.
They did, didn't they?
I mean, the Van Sandbeeks and Linda have been volunteering in this community for an extraordinarily long period of time. And they've done a lot. People, the fact that I've only been here three years and I know enough about their history to say, wow, they've been here, that's. Linda, her involvement in Haha, which, I've been in there, it's beautiful. Yeah, no, so I think that's where I'm standing. If we could do all four, that would be cool, but I'm agreeing with you that I think two a year is probably the limit.
I think your, excuse me, I think your recommendation is, is good Linda, because there, there are people that have been in the community and haven't gotten any recognition. And Leo doesn't just, I mean, he's all over. Lots of different places, yes. And he has his grandchildren included in, when he's doing something, he includes his grandchildren and I think that's great too. Okay, thank you Donna. Cal, now you're last.
I'll just make the motion that we nominate Leo and Deb and Linda Hazelstrom.
Okay. Motion's been made, do I have a second?
You second that.
Second that.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded and thirded, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. So you can contact them and we'll get the plaques and whenever the plaques come in, we'll have a.
Presented.
Presented, presentation, yes. All right, old business, B. The media policy. Cal?
Oh, it's my. All right. So when we, when we had this come up, maybe you remember, I asked to split the motion. And it's part of, partly because I was, I mean, I agree we should have somebody designated as a spokesperson. Somebody who, if the media has somebody they need to talk to, they have information they want, we should have somebody they can go to. Having said that, the wording in this isn't entirely clear. It uses the word employee a lot. And that, as far as I know, as of right now, we technically have two employees, depending on perspective. But you might also say we have seven employees. So I think that this document at the very least is not clear enough.
Okay.
I think that if it were, I, I picture something like this coming through a corporation who doesn't want a disgruntled worker going out and running to the media about something going on in a company. Where we're government and it just seems like there really isn't a situation where you would ever want to regulate communication of anybody involved in government, to be honest. I know there had been some issues last year. One particular article where individual who was on the board said some not-so-nice things about another individual who was on the board. And that's the kind of thing that none of us really wanna see anymore. But sometimes it's, people sabotage themselves when they do stuff like that. I just, I don't think there's really a, a good idea to have anything in place that restricts any speech. The TIP two, there was an article about that that was very controversially received, but in the end, we ended up possibly saving ourselves from a lot of headache and maybe mentions of that TIP in the article helped with that. So, I don't know, I just, I feel like we shouldn't be having anything in place that could be construed as any form of censorship or restrictions of transparency. So I would make a motion to appeal the town of Formosa media policy.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second though.
Seconded for discussion purposes at least. Anything further you would like to add to that, Aaron? Any comments?
I'd like to hear from anybody else though, definitely.
Comments from the rest of the board? Cal?
Um, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with, with Aaron's, I guess, intent behind it. I think the wording could probably be worked on, but I think it's, I think it's prudent that, that we do, I mean, I don't care who it is, I'm currently named the person. But I think it's prudent that we do have somebody that's kind of designated such that we don't have people's, you know, misspeaking or speaking out of turn or something like that on things and then it, you know, obviously can, things can happen from that. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Okay, Donna?
Well, it's, I don't know. I know things get turned around on paper and in public, so, I don't know if it's really, it's questionable whether or not we really need a media person.
Okay. Chuck?
Well, I think a lot of that should be proofread before it's actually ready, to make sure the accuracy is there. That'll take care of the problem.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Um, I think that's principally, like you, you, you would address, there was, there was a typo in this week's paper. That was, that was no end of the world, that was a simple thing. But the same, the same justification could be applied to maybe.
Um, but the same, the same justification could be applied to maybe filter certain stances on certain issues, and that's, that's really, I think, what need to be avoided. As far as issues of people being inappropriate, then, I mean, I think there's a point where you just need to let people embarrass themselves if they're going to try to do that. And I think, just to say it, I mean, this board isn't the board that would ever do that. I don't see anybody here ever doing that sort of thing where they're going to, in a public forum, you know, go after one of the other board members. Where, we don't always agree, but we negotiate.
We are human, nobody agrees.
Yeah.
We all have our own opinions.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think it's really good to make sure everybody knows that we're not ever going to try to hide any of our opinions from each other or from the public.
Terry, do you have something to?
No, I just know we, we did this as, had a recommendation from our insurance company when they did their audit last year. That's kind of why I brought it.
So did they say it was necessary that we have a...
Well, if you look at the bottom, it says this, it is SDPA's recommendation that the sample media quality, I mean...
Policy be treated like other policies your entity may have in use.
But it was one of the recommendations they made after they did their audit last year.
So then my recommendation would be to put this on a, a work session also and go through it. Dan, you had something?
Yeah, please. Um, a big reasoning that we had this in policy and we had the members discuss with them is because, number one, a liability, you, you're not wanting to limit anybody, but the wrong thing said can harm the whole board. A great example was in two thousand and seven when we had the flood, and we had all the members that went to the media and were discussing different items, and it hurt us in that two thousand and seven flood, with the members going to it and saying the wrong things to the media and published back on us and harmed the residents as well as the town, as well as the benefits that the town was going to get, and the right application of what we were doing in the disaster weren't handled properly because of the members. And even though you may think your opinion and your voice is a good opinion and voice of freedom, but when disasters or any other situation happened, you're better to have a post-person to do the discussion, which is usually the board president or vice president, and you discuss within a board before a release is done. And in the last twenty-five years of my experience, that's been very well-kept and then very well-voiced with the board.
Thank you, Dan. Laura?
Just as someone who likes words, I read this, I mean, it, it would be confusing to me, like, say I bump into any one of you, and I just have, I, you know, I'm making small talk, okay? Like, at what point, I think it, it would create confusion as far as, like, what information can be used, what information can't be used. Um, if I was on the, the board and had this as a guideline, I would be confused as to, um, I, I think it would, I think it would create an opacity that did not look good. Um, I mean, the citizens want to know what each of you individually thinks. Dan makes a good point, but I think there's a common sense element to it. If you have a developing natural disaster, commenting shouldn't be happening on it, like, there should be an official spokesperson. I, you know, I used to be a firefighter, so, like, if there was a developing incident, not just anybody should be talking about it, like, you would be pointing them to your officer. So I think Dan makes a good point. I would just caution that this could end up looking like, looking like you're wanting to hide something, when people do want to know what you individually think, because you're individuals, you're part of this community. So that would just be my, my two cents as someone who works for the media.
Thank you, Laura. Trina, did you have something?
Um, I'll let it go.
Okay. All right, Dan?
One more thing, thank you, and I appreciate that, but sometimes the media doesn't construe what we say either. You know, things are sometimes put in in the wrong way, you know, like, well, your article you just put in about the wells, that you said number one was down, number two wasn't. Number two is down, number one is up in our main well. You know, and people will read that stuff and know, construe that differently and say, we thought there was a different problem. And we had problems in the disaster where people misconstrued stuff to the media, too, because it wasn't recorded or it was put in their wording on that, and I understand the freedom of it, and we appreciate the freedom, and our board members have that freedom in their board trustee input on the individual items, so that it is recorded and brought Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Aaron?
Okay, so, the idea of something being, um, tonight was a particular example, we had sort of a, a specific technical miscommunication, but, um, for a lot of situations, whether or not something was misconstrued to the media is going to be, in many cases, where you stand on a specific issue, and that's kind of where the issue comes in. If you stand on one specific point within an issue, then, yeah, you, you might believe the media misconstrued where other people may think they were on point, and that's kind of why we have unbiased media, so that they can say what they hear, bring it to the people, and then people can make their own decisions regardless of whether it's necessarily popular.
Okay, thank you. Cal?
I think that the intent of the media policy is that it gives the board an, an opportunity to kind of develop what our message should be, and then have one person deliver it for, you know, to let people know the board's intent. And so, if we need to, you know, there's probably a fine line between, um, capturing that intent and then allowing board members to voice their opinions on certain things to the media, which I don't have a problem with that, per se. So I don't know if that line could be captured and then edited the document or not, but, um, to me, it seems, like I said, the intent of the document is just so the, there's a spokesperson for the board that can communicate the board's intent and not the intent of the spokesperson or any one person on the board.
Thank you, Cal. Aaron?
I think so, thinking about it, there are probably better written documents, more appropriately-written documents that would have stipulations along the lines of, and I know there are Supreme Court cases who have addressed this very specifically, is that identify who you're speaking for. Are you speaking for your own personal opinion? Are you speaking for your professional, your professional opinion in your capacity, or you're, are you speaking for, so, there's a difference between you talking about your personal opinion, you talking about your opinion as an individual trustee, and you trying to share an opinion that is representative of everybody on the board. Those are three, and I think the only way this document could be legitimate is if it differentiated across those three points.
Very good. So we'll put this on a work session and, uh...
Yeah.
Hash it to her. Okay. Uh, that leave, puts us on C, the new town website presentation. Trina?
Okay. Perfect. Good reason to have a media person, so that you guys don't have to make all the decisions yourselves. I went with lime green, because you don't have a media person. Actually, it was actually all blues and, and sages based on the color of the picture that you guys chose for the first page, but it was a little too bland, so, um, we can change it if you'd like, but I thought that looked fairly good with the picture. The picture is large enough that we just did it on the homepage, and all the other pages just go straight into content, and, um, I have nine items that I removed from the old site that we can add back in if we want. I recommend that the board, um, choose somebody for me to work with, just one person, uh, so that we can just kind of go through the items. We don't have to, we could just, I could just list them off now, we could talk about them, too. It's up to you. Um, the biggest concern is, um, paying for additional space. About a month ago, I talked to Jill, and she was like, well, I want agendas and meet, meeting minutes from at least six years ago up there. That seems excessive to me, um, because you're paying for that space, and if somebody wants that information, they can come to the city hall and pick it up easy enough. So it's just something to think about. How many people need the information or accessing it, and is it worth us paying to have it out on the website versus them coming and picking it up? And I mention that because we have newsletters, ordinances, resolutions, agendas, meeting minutes, special minutes. The videos are on YouTube, so that doesn't matter anymore. Um, so it's a lot of documents, uh, to house, and we could probably house two years' worth of documents before we would have to worry about it, but that's something that you guys might want to think about, where, where that cutoff line is. Um, anyway, this is the, the homepage, you can scroll down, I tried to keep it as true to our current one as possible. Upcoming events are just lists, one or two at a time. Then the Hermosa announcements, um, that's the only place for announcements is, is on the main page. And then I went down to the Neighborhood Watch and the community. Why? Because that's what was on the original website.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks. Sorry.
It's okay.
I have, I have a calendar, I'm back for my pickup.
Oh, gosh. Uh, so that's what's on the original website. At the bottom of every page is contact information for the office. I did not put our office hours on there, so I'm going to add that, because that just kind of came up, uh, tonight, so I'll add office hours. One thing that is on here that wasn't on our other one is a subscription. So people can... People can sign up to have a subscription, which would be nice, right? If, if a board meeting's changed or something, you subscribe, and then there's a, a whole group email distribution list that you could just say, "Town board meeting's been, um, changed," or something like that. Uh, I asked Jill if that was something she would want to have up there, but I haven't heard back from her. So that's something new. If you scroll up to the top, there's the menu option, um, the town calendar is, uh, just that, a calendar. And then, um, yeah, a residence page and a government page. And so the residential information is just things that I would think that new residents or residents would like to have. I put Hermosa connects up there because we had a business page, and it was outdated. And Hermosa connects, um, from my understanding, is supposed to be Hermosa businesses. Now, their website is not up to date either.
They're smart.
To have a good website, you don't want to have outdated information, so I did my best to, um, reference other, like, government pages, so that we didn't have, um, did you like that?
This is hilarious. I'm sorry, I couldn't help it, it just caught my attention.
I'm glad, I'm glad, a stack of papers for the forms, yeah, especially since I just did a bunch of forms. Anyway, yeah, so, um, you know, we could, uh, look at that some more, but basically, that's the residential page, and then, uh, most of those are links to other things. The government page, uh, the staff, uh, I just did staff, board members, and support that were already on our existing page, so Anthony is not included. I made a quick reference to the calendar, frequently asked election questions, um, since it's an election year, I kept that up there. And, um, if you click on, on the, um, agendas, yeah. So I set it up by year, right? If you're interested in the agenda, you may be interested in the minutes, so they're both right there next to each other, additional documents, it's right there. So you have, the whole year will be spilled out there, and then archive data, which would, I would say would be like six to twelve months, and then, and then we'll have a note underneath, older documents can be obtained from the city hall, something like that. So that's the gist of it. Um, some of the documents out there are Word documents, those are prone to, uh, being accessible and easy to add viruses to and stuff, so we need to ensure that we don't use Word documents and that type of thing, so...
Okay.
We'll get that changed. I can go through the nine things that are not on the new site that are on the old one, but my main objective today is to get approval to move from our old site to this new site. Um, this week I was going to show the office staff how to, um, update this website and make changes to it. We have to get ahold of, um, Cal, what is it called?
Catalyst. Catalyst.
Yeah, catalyst, to get the domain name transferred. So, um, that's my hope, that we can, uh, decide to do that tonight, and... I think your domain is coming up due in April, so that's why I'm pushing it a little bit, because it can take several weeks to get domains moved over, even though it's a five-minute change.
Okay. Cal?
So you mentioned something about the excessive space required to keep all the documents on there. How much space are we talking? I mean, just a bunch of Word documents and stuff, right?
Yeah, they're mostly PDFs, some of them are kind of long, and thank you for mentioning that. So some of them are resolutions. Right now, I have one link for ordinances under, yeah. Well, the financial is a PDF, but yes, the first link under there takes you to a different website. Everything is supposed to be saved there, and it's not, and it's not up to date. But our ordinances, if you look in Jill's office, is like eight inches of paperwork, and then there's resolutions. I recommend that we update everything in here. That's expensive. They are very expensive. Fifteen hundred dollars a year, plus about a thousand dollars every time you ask for updates. Why? Because they're taking that paper document and turning it into a webpage with special links and all of this stuff. I'm not sure why we chose that. Does anybody know the history of that? Because really, we're a small town, and that's a heck of a lot of money, when we could have, um, some PDFs and put it there and save that fifteen hundred dollars a year, plus, um...
Yeah, I, I'm, just kind of a follow-up to my previous question.
Yeah.
So, I mean, all the Word documents and stuff can be converted to PDF, so we'd get away from that, but, I mean, you know, I have manuals and all kinds of stuff on my computer and everything, and, you know, I can't imagine that even all the digital stuff that we have available on the website now is going to be more than like two gigs, because it's all just text and everything, so...
I don't have the number, because I haven't talked to who houses our website right now, so I don't have that number. But you're right, I mean, if we do everything in PDF, it does reduce the amount, and we've gotten rid of the, uh, recordings. Everything is housed here, too, so we, we don't necessarily have to talk to who's housing our, our website right now to find that out, we just have to, um, look on our own servers or computers. But my hope is to have enough space that we don't worry about it. But my hope is to have enough space that we don't worry about it, number one, and number two, that maybe we move all our ordinances off that website. It's a lovely website, and it's great for searching our ordinances, but, um, I'm, I'm kind of hoping that we would just go to PDF forum, because PDFs have great search capability, and they also have all that AI to help you find what you need in them now, too, so it's even getting easier.
Well, I know, um, if I may, I know I saved all the ordinances on my, uh, phone as an HTML file, just because the file is small and you can search it very quickly, and then it'll go through and highlight everywhere that that word appears, which I'm sure PDF will as well. So on the website, it, I think it could be either formatted, it doesn't matter, but just as a point of information for everybody, you can export the ordinances as HTML or another type of file, and then have it available for search. And then I was working on also, uh, adding all of our stuff to an AI bot, which it did work for a little while, now it's not working, so, have to look at that again, but...
Yeah, yeah. That would be great, especially on the website, to have an AI bot for it.
Yeah, that's something we could talk about, too.
Aaron?
Yeah, uh, the only, is there a, is there a regulation or something saying that we have to use, uh, select from a specific group of...
Yeah, I looked at several government websites, and I found a variety of different, um, things. You know, some, some, uh, sites only had like six months' worth of data, and some had ten years. So it led me to believe that as long as we have our data available to people, it's not a requirement to have it on the internet.
And as far as the, um, the volume over time, I feel like we'd be better off dropping, like, the full packet and just keeping, you know, if somebody wants to see the full packet, they can come back in here, and I think, you know, so it's more important to have the meeting, the minutes and the agendas on there, and maybe three months of packets, or whatever we need to, to keep within our space, but...
Well, we can do two years.
Yeah, 'cause if it's just...
From what I could tell. I mean, I've, I've only done this year so far, but...
Yeah, I feel like if it was just agendas and minutes, we could probably fit everything.
Dan?
If you remember right, it was back when Shannon was Finance Officer, when we did that ordinance change, and we were doing a lot of P and Z stuff, with 10.6, 10.9, and all of our different ordinances weren't lining up to our 10.6 and 10.9 at that time. So then that's when we hired that company to come in and balance and redo all the ordinances, so everything communicated with the subdivision to everything we had, and the planning, plating, everything all the way down the line, and what happened? Then that come back, and they also reworded and restructured our ordinances, so then we had to go back through and have the attorney legally look at everything and make sure it balanced to that. And so it was quite a mess in the beginning, because everything that reconstrued and where it was, they said the wording wasn't proper, and changed that, and so we lost a lot of stuff that we didn't really think that we should've lost, and then with their updates, I'm not very impressed with what they're at now. And as small as your changes are, I think if you have somebody that can do it, you're going to save big money and build the courses, as long as they stay on doing the updates.
Well, and that's what I noticed in taking care of, and just looking at the old website, I shouldn't say taking care of, but looking at that old website, it was like there's three different locations for ordinances, and they're all different, and so, uh, yeah, it's not...
I think that can be fixed.
Yeah, yeah. The, my goal personally in creating this website was to have a Public Works page, and we don't have that yet. But, I mean, we're doing all of this work with, uh, Public Works, and there's nothing on the website about it. So I still hope to be able to create a Public Works page that we could put news on, instead of just being on the, you know, announcements.
So I have a question on this, I'm so minor, but it just hit me.
Yes.
Hermosa School. To me, that, if I was looking at that picture, I would think parks, I wouldn't think school.
Yeah. Oh, no, I mean, all of these pictures are, are AI-generated.
Yeah, just, yeah, well, that, just had to have that comment.
No, I, I would love it if all of these were actual pictures of our town, um, but I'm, I just haven't gone around to take pictures, and I'm not very good at it. So I just told AI that I wanted a picture of a playground, because otherwise I got a school that didn't look like ours. So that's how those, all of those pictures were created, within the app. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'd be great if we could change all of them.
So at this time, you need, you would like just one person to work with, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or a couple, that we could just, you know, make changes, get it kinda solidified, and get the domain name transferred over, those two things.
Okay. Do I volunteer? Anybody like to?
I'm on spring break next week, so...
I'm not computer smart, so...
Well, and it...
I probably could take a picture.
I could keep working with Jill and Terry, too, but I know they're busy.
Let's, let's have, uh, if Aaron's willing to do a little bit, and, um, I can do a little bit, too, so, just give either Aaron or I or Terry a call anytime.
I'll send you an email with the link and all the lists.
All right. You're gonna get that, right?
Yeah, you bet. And so we're good to change the domain name, too, or...
Do we need to make a motion?
I think so. Probably we do need to make a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion authorizing the transfer from the old website to the new, and the transfer of the domain name.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aaron made it, Cal seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, Trina. That brings us to, um, uh, oh, the vendor permits. Um, there was a work session last week on that, and the board made some decisions. So we need to express our intent, um, for the vendor permit fees to change from what they were to what the board called for, which was?
So I'll just make the motion now.
Okay.
And that is that we change the vendor permit fee structure such that any events held on private property are, um... Property, the property owner is liable for those events, and that there's no fee associated with it or permit.
Fee, no permit, and...
And then on public land, the permit fee will be fifty dollars a year for the peddler's slash transient style of permit.
Okay.
And for the food truck slash beverage style of permit will be a hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
I believe, I believe that's what we came up with in the work session.
Your memory's better than mine, but, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? I am surprised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Must've got the details right in.
I think you, I think you'd handle it, yeah.
I'm sure Tammy would say something if I did, right?
I would've.
I appreciate it.
All right, anything more on that? Okay. That brings us to new business, which we have done, which then brings us to items from the constituents. Any comments, questions from the public?
Wow, it's quiet.
All right, on that note, we'll have trustee input. I would like to say, um, first, before we go into trustee input, that there will be an executive session tonight, uh, personnel, and, um, probably just personnel tonight, and there likely will be a motion after that fact, if you would like to stay, um, for that. Beyond that, we'll go to trustee input. Donna?
I don't have nothing tonight, and, short and sweet.
Short and sweet, I guess. Cal?
Um, I don't know, I thought it was a good meeting. I appreciate Chuck working and getting that street fix and everything like that. You know, probably should've gotten it done sooner, you know, but, I mean, it is what it is, and then I will, I'll look over in the contract and we'll see if, um, you know, what the stipulations are for, uh, kinda hiring out and stuff like that, was, you know, just to make sure that I'm on the, I understand exactly what's supposed to happen with that, so...
Yep.
Anyways, but I appreciate you getting it done, Chuck, and so, anyway, thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
Uh, uh, if you look up, you can see there's some new equipment in the office. Live streaming is on its way. Probably need another couple of days, it'll be wired up, and then we'll be ready to do our test runs of the recordings and have a look and make sure...
We all smell beautiful.
We all get our, yeah, get our makeup artists in here. Now, yeah, so it should be coming fairly soon, and we'll work on, hopefully integrating it smoothly with the website, and, yeah, should be good. That's all I got.
Okay, very good. The only thing that I have is that if you have noticed, the new, the VAC truck that we bought from Hill City is here in town. It is sitting on, um, Mr. Ferguson's property, because, um, they will be checking into the, what needs to be done to it, and, um, making sure that all the lights work and all that. Um, Lon and I drove up to get it on Friday, uh, along with all the things that go along with it, including a maintenance manual, it's about that thick, uh, which we, uh, pre, which we appreciate getting. Um, it, it drove well, it does not have a ton of power, imagine that, going up, going up the big hills, but, uh...
Coming down that hill at Hayward.
Yeah, and coming down the hill was fun. It, it, uh, being a tanker that it is, it will require, um, or could require a tanker's license, Lon does have that. Um, you don't, it's not needed when it's, when it's not full to have that license, but Lon has a CDL, I also have a CDL. It is an automatic, um, so it's not difficult to drive, um, and there will be classes on how to use it, and, um, we're happy to get it, and happy that it's here in our, in our possession now. Thank you, everybody, for the meeting, it was, it was good, all the information was good. It's nice to have it done within almost two hours, not quite, for the regular meeting, but we have executive session, which hopefully will not take more than a half hour. So, on that note, we'll have a quick five-minute break, and I then will resume. Entertain a motion to go into executive session at 8:10.
I'll make it.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Make a motion, we, uh, exit out of this executive session at 9:01.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I got my clock here. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now we have a motion, do we need to make a motion? Oh. Is there anybody out there?
Nope, they're all gone this time.
I'll make a motion for Terry to develop and share with us a...
Job description.
Yeah, job description for the administrative assistant position. And provide it to us for review.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any further discussion out of executive session, no other motions? None. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:03.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting at 9:03.
Donna's made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Cal seconds that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Make a motion, we, uh, exit out of this executive session at 9:01. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I got my clock here. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now we have a motion, do we need to make a motion? Oh. Is there anybody out there?
Nope, they're all gone this time.
I'll make a motion for Terry to develop and share with us a...
Job description.
Posting for the, yeah, job description for the administrative assistant position. And provide it to us for review.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Any further discussion out of executive session, no other motions? None. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:03.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting at 9:03.
Donna's made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Cal seconds that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.